Ready, we'll go ahead and get started. If everyone will stand, we'll have an implication. Most gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We want to thank you for this city and we want to thank you for the people that live here. We want to ask your special blessing on those that protect our country and are serving and give of their life and they give of their time and their sincerity to make sure we live in a free country. We want to thank you for the things that we have to do here today. We ask your guidance and your leadership that we would do what best for this community and we want to thank you for this community and everyone that's here tonight. In your son's name, amen. As the record show, that we have a quorum, that we're all here and we'll call a meeting to order and if you would, Councilman McElroy will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It's nice to have everybody here this afternoon. We thank you, Mr. Phelps, for being here as a guest. Appreciate the staff being here. Glad that Gil's here and Mr. Thornton. And if y'all look around, we have some new people sitting in new seats and we're really excited about that. Of course Slater's already exited and we're glad he's here, but we're glad to have you, Leanne, in that position.
Thank you.
Zana, it's nice to have you sitting in that chair.
Thank you.
And for those of you that hadn't been in the office, if you look around when you come in the front door, we also have a new billing clerk and her name is Ann Mount and we are excited to have her onboard. We appreciate everybody being here. Mr. Fields, we're glad you're here too. It is at this time that we open the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, we allow that at this time. If not, then we'll go ahead and proceed with our meeting. The first thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 14th meeting. I trust you've all reviewed those and I'll make a motion that we accept those.
A second now.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to hear from Mr. Randall Field. He has prepared our 2014 and 15 audit report.
Everyone should have a copy of the audit. I think if you would turn over to the table of contents, I'd like to do briefly is go through the information that's contained in your audit report and then I'll answer any questions to come in the audit or preparation of the report itself. As we look at the table of contents, the first thing in the financial section we have is independent audit reports back to you as a council. We'll briefly go through that tonight. The next thing you have is our management discussion analysis required supplemental information. You can see required supplemental information required by government and by accounting standards board. If you'd be in there, the management discussion analysis will give you additional information comparing the last two years' information. It's prepared with your staff with our reviewing of that information that we have. We will not go through that tonight, but I encourage you to read through that. The next is the basic financial statements. This is what we issue our opinion on. We will go through those very briefly tonight, all except the notes to the financial statement. I encourage each of you to read through those. It'll give you additional information on how the financial statements are prepared and additional information about your city. Again, we have additional required supplemental information. As we mentioned before, it's required by government accounting standards board. Required to put a budget comparison in your two major funds, which is your general fund and your economic development fund. And new this year, you'll see throughout the report, we have additional information that we've gone through and recorded on the Texas municipal retirement system. We're going to record your share of the liability that's estimated at the end of the year for your city. I will go and record it down into the financial statements itself. This gives you additional information concerning those and all in the notes, the supplemental information also taken to the. I encourage you to read through those if you have time. If you would, if you'll turn over to my report on page one, let me briefly go through it with you. The first paragraph describes the financial statements that we are issuing and continuing on as we go through and we talked about. We'll go through those in detail apart from the basic financial statement. The second paragraph says that the responsibility for the financial statements is management's responsibility and they're responsible for the fair presentation of financial statements for free of material misstatement whether due to fraud or error. The next paragraph defines my responsibility as an auditor to express opinion on the financial statements and audits made according to generally accepted auditing standards. No standards required that I plan to perform the audit to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement. The next paragraph is, describes what an audit, basically tells us that we design our controls and procedures. We look at your internal controls. We do not study those controls. We just look at those controls that they relate to the procedures that we use, so therefore we do not issue opinion on your internal controls. The last paragraph is the opinion paragraph and as we look at that, it says that the following financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the change in your financial position cash flow for year-to-year ending September 30th of 2015 in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. What that means to you as a council, that's an unmodified report and that's what you want and that's what our creditors get to see also. Turn the page to page two. As I mentioned to you before, this year we've done, we've implemented new accounting principles that we have concerning our retirement that we have. We'll be gasping 68 and 71. We'll see as we go through the statements all the full now supplemental information that is required to be in this statement for the first year that we have. Then we went, as we went through the table of contents, explained to you what a required supplemental information is. We mentioned that. Again, it's not a required part of the basic financial statements. We review that information and reconcile it back and do the individual procedures on the back to the basic financial statements. We do not issue opinion on that. Any questions that the council might have concerning my report back to the council? If not, let's briefly look at your financial position and transactions for the current year ending September 30th. Let's start on page 11. Let's look at our statement of net position and if you make reference to the first two statements, we'll call those government-wide statements. When we call them government-wide statements, we go in for the governmental activities that we have. We go in, we report all your fixed assets, we report all your debt. We combine all the funds that you have that other than the water and sewer fund into the governmental activity funds. We report those just like any other business enterprise that you have. We record depreciation. We set up capital assets to be depreciated. We report the debt, report principal payments as a reduction of the liability instead of the debt as we do in your governmental funds that we'll also go through today. So again, as you look across the top of the page, our governmental activities are going to be, as I mentioned before, all the funds other than the water and sewer fund. The business type of activities are going to be our water and sewer fund. We account for the water and sewer fund, the same in both funds. As you'll see, we do the full approval on this in the individual funds that we have and also in the statement of net position. As we look at your assets, I think you're familiar with what we have, our cash, our receivables, with our property tax accounts, our paving needs, notes that we have that is due September 30th that we have in our economic development, that what if they loan money out and being paid back to then? Amounts due from other governments, going to be your taxes that you had that was due from the appraisal district at the end of the year. We have our restricted assets, our meter deposits are going to be in our water and sewer fund restricted with the same amount as the liability that we owe to the customers. And then as I mentioned before, you'll see that we record capital assets all the way down through and less depreciation that we also record during the year. Gives you total assets with two fund types. Our deferred outflow of resources is something that's new that's relating to the pension plans. Again, as we go back in, we recorded this year, your pension liability and we do that based on actuary values that's set up by your retirement. The Texas municipal league goes in, studies that to see what it is. It's based on what the rate of return of money that you're going to have, how many people that you have, what age those people are and what retirement age they're estimating that they'll retire. All those are factors that go into what we're recording. We pick a recording date. Obviously, we can't do it September 30th for your September 30th statements, so it's going to be done prior. So there's going to be payments, there's going to be income and things that are deferred and be realized in future periods and that's what we call your deferred outflow and deferred outflow of resources that's below. That's relating to that plan. Liabilities is concerning the amounts that you owe to September 30th in various funds that you have. I think that as we look at your non-current liabilities, we know that our amounts that are due within one year and the amounts that are due more than one year is going to include your certificate of obligations that we have. So it's going to be notes payable that we owe to the bank at that time that was paid off, I think within 30 days after the year-end. And our landfill closure costs that we have in our review, we estimate based on what we think the total amount that we're able to put into the landfill, based on the total amount that we've already used and what we book a liability for what it's going to cost to close that landfill at this time. And then the new liability, as we mentioned before, is our net pension liability we show for both funds. This is the amount that is estimated that the city would have due on its pension plan at the end of the year. Under your net positions, we'll show your equity that you have in each of your various fund types. You can see the breakdown of the funds that are all included, our governmental activities, you saw our debt service fund, our street maintenance, our drug seizure fund that we have, our economic development hotel motel. These are all the net positions of those funds at the end of the year.
Question, which you might have over the top of the page? If not, let's turn and go through the statement of activities. Briefly, we'll look at this. Again, we're recording depreciation into our various departments that we show on the left-hand side of the page. As you look across the top, we have program revenues, local revenues are specifically identified with each one of our departments that we know. It's going to be grants, it's going to be revenue that's billed in those particular departments that are there, that are specifically identified with each one of them. As we come across the page, you'll see the net that we show over there. That's to measure the cost of each one of our departments to our taxpayers because if you look at the bottom, under our governmental activities in this particular fund, our general revenue includes, is all at the bottom. We do not allocate it back to those. It's our property taxes, sales tax, franchise tax, all those are shown at the bottom are not allocated back to each one of those. Your business activities, again, are going to be recorded just like we do with the charges for services and expenditures and comes back down at the bottom. You'll see we have an increase in our net position this year in our government-wide statements and our beginning balances. You'll see our change for our accounting principle. We had to get a starting point on your liability, as we mentioned before, so we went back and booked the beginning figures this year, estimating what the starting amount was in there, so then we adjust prior years for that amount to get a starting point on it. Any questions you might have? If not, let's look at page 14. We're going to go back to our governmental funds that we report on. It's going to be like, more like, this is where our books and records are maintained. This is the way we budget. This is reports a few a month there quarterly from your personnel that you go through. As we look across the top of the page, the general fund you're familiar with, it's any, we account for everything in the general fund that's not required by law to be accounted for somewhere else. Economic development is a major fund because of the amount that his assets that he has in it is broke out separate. Our other governmental funds according to accounting standards are not all broke out, but we'll see at the bottom what all is included in each one of those that we went through. A major difference in this fund, as we mentioned before, we don't record fixed assets. Fixed assets are recorded as capital related and you hear them being paid for those. Property taxes are only realized when we actually collect them, but not available in the year that we have for use for the budget. And so as we look at your assets, liabilities, and then put the offset to your property taxes that we have. So when we come back, the remaining portion is your equity that you have below, shows your ending fund balances that we have. The non-spendable amount that we have is for paving needs, the needs that we have, it's shown as separate because it's not going to be available in the short term or short period to be used as fund until we actually collect those needs that we have. The economic development, you can see the amount of fund balance that they have at the end of the year is reported there. We show is, is amount that restricted for economic development. Long-term debt's going to be the amount of money that you have, our fund balance that we have in our debt service fund, our hotel motel taxes, the amount of money that we have in that particular fund, the fund balance at the end of the year. Drug seizure, the same, and then our street maintenance, our funds that we've had that we accumulate the sales tax money to be used for streets. And then we go over in the general fund, you'll see the assigned fund balances, the amount that you have in the capital projects fund, the general capital projects fund that we have, and then the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Any questions over the balance sheet? If not, as you look at page 15, it's going to give you an explanation of what I kind of briefly went through with you, to show you and reconcile the two statements together. Let's look at page 16, going to show you the operations for our revenue expenditures, change in fund balance for our governmental funds that we have. Again, the same fund definition that we had in the prior statement that we have. It shows you revenue from each one of the sources that we had during the year, less the expenditures by each one of our departments as we budget those. The same definition would be there. Capital expenditure is being shown separately. Capital expenditure is being anything, the spend of $5,000 per item that's going to be utilized in the future, hasn't a life more than one year, capital outlay. You'll see the debt that we had, we paid off our note in the general fund in this particular year and the other debt payment on principal interest is going to be on our certificate of obligations that we have in our debt service fund in this year. Other finances and resources, you'll see our operating transfers in that we had in programs, insurance proceeds, it's money that we collected for insurance that we had during the year and then our loan proceeds, where we borrowed the money from the bank, again, that we paid back, I think for the 30 days after the end of the year. Shows you the difference in our revenue and expenditures for the year that shows you that we had an increase in each one of our fund types during the year. The $33,000 is not, I'll give you the breakdown of that. It's about $2,700 of that debt service. We have the street, about $9,600, the drug seizure, about $200, and the hotel motels are about $20,000, the $33,000 increase that we had in the other fund type. Comes back to your ending fund balances that we had at the end of the year. Any questions which you might have with the council? If not, the next page is going to reconcile the two statements that we just went through together. Briefly, very briefly, on page 18, you'll see the water and sewer. Again, it's the same as what we went through in the other. There's no differences that are going to be in that particular statement than what we went through in our government-wide. They're recorded in the same manner that we've done. Page 19 shows you the operations of the water and sewer. Remember, as we look at that, it has depreciation included in there. We show an increase, a small increase for the year. Remember, the prior period adjustment being for our pension plan that we have our liability done, but you see depreciation of $144,000 is taken out of that as we look at the amount and come back maybe to cash flow for the operations. It's shown on the next page, it's going to be the cash flow, a statement showing the change in expenses in it during the year. That gives you a very brief overview of the basic financial statements that we issued our opinion on. I encourage you to read through the rest of the audit before you have any questions or you're going to get to the back, you got to answer those, or you need to hope for Leanne and she can really give you an answer for any of those. Questions over my report or the audit itself that you might have with the council? If not, we appreciate the help of your staff when we're here. I think some of you have been in when we were here, we get a lot of information, set up a lot of tables, asked a lot of questions and they're willing to help us and we appreciate that and... Thank you, sir. Was the staff cooperative in providing all the information?
Yes, sir. They are. They're very much so.
All right. And everything is where it's supposed to be?
Yes, sir. Nothing came to our attention that was materially mistaken or out.
Over here, any more questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
Take your time this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other questions? If not, I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Fields' report.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks again for being here and presenting it to us.
Thank you.
The next thing we would like to do is to consider a recommendation from the Mioshu EDC to continue services with a retail coach. Contract is up for renewal and we need to consider that at the end, would you like to?
Yes, sir. If y'all remember, last year, council approved a contract to go into contract with retail coach for 2015. That contract's up for renewal. MEDC board has met, recommended the continuation of that contract. Mayor Potom Ellis is on that board and he may have something to add.
We met, what, two weeks ago? And we decided that we'd go ahead and continue our contract with them. It's a council approved it. We thought it'd be a good idea. Really, I think one of the main things that we're paying for is the connections to developers. We haven't necessarily seen anything yet, so to speak of, but there is stuff that's being in the works of trying to get completed. I think, you know, if we continue that relationship with the retail coach, they could continue to help with that.
So we didn't get anything really out of the first year's service except some talks?
Well, I mean, we got a lot. You know, they did the first report. We got that out. I think, in my opinion, it was kind of a bad timing in the community because our main focus was trying to help local businesses with that report. But about the same time that report came out was when we had our alcohol election and some of the business leaders in the community wanted to say everything and that report was invalid just because the one number about alcohol. And so some of the business leaders chose not to use that.
I think that report provided some important data for us, some recognized our trade area and some focuses possibly.
Casey did make the comment that her and Aaron began with the retail coach, didn't have a pretty serious talk about how she wanted him to be more involved with our businesses. And I think that would be a beneficial thing to the local businesses as long as they're accepting to it. But you can't have a meeting kind of about the businesses and when they're not accepting the information that you're trying to give them and discrediting your work, it's pretty difficult for them to do that. But the work they're doing to bring in other businesses, I think, really benefits us.
I think something else to remember is that, you know, whenever you're looking at economic development, lots of times it's a long process, you know, it doesn't just happen overnight. So it would be our recommendation for council to approve moving forward with a contract for another year.
If we didn't go with the contract this year, then we'd just have to pay the startup cost all over again. But we could continue it at that discounted rate for this year.
What was the initial?
I think it was $20,000.
$20,000.
Hold on a second, but I can remember for sure. Any other questions? I'll make a motion that we continue that contract based on the recommendation of the MEDC. Second, pal. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance number 0485-0216. That has to do with our stop sign ordinance. I know that you've all taken a long hard look at that and drove every street and agree with everything that Ramon has proposed here and so...
I think the only real change, there's an additional stop sign at the end of East State and East Avenue B. That's the additional stop sign. Council, we remember, we're doing this in sections of town and this takes the east side of town into consideration.
So basically, the same with one major change?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion with that said ordinance? We have a motion and a second to pass that ordinance number 485-0216. Is there any discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to consider resolution number R712-0216, which is an application for criminal justice grant. And I'm going to let Leanne with the chief go over that.
Yes, Chief, if you would.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Mayor, council, this is a, something we do every year. We don't apply to get the grant every year, but this year we are. And I want to turn this over to Lieutenant Parker. This has been his baby from the very beginning. He's been working on this and he put a lot of work in, so I want to let him explain to you what the grant is for and what we're trying for.
What we're looking at is doing a exercise and motivation facility this year. It's kind of my opinion that in order to promote wellness and health and give the community a lot better service is if our guys are more fit and everything, this don't only go to us, it'll go to the fire department. I did some studies or some research on it and last year was 18 officers in the state of Texas that died of heart attacks. There was about 24 that were hospitalized due to incidents, high-stress incidents. We've got a facility now, but it needs to be upgraded. All of our equipment's getting to where it's dangerous to the guys, you know, and prevent injuries, putting them back into that. If we had updated equipment, then maybe it'll give the guys more motivation, knowing that, you know, the equipment's safe and everything to use. So that's why I'm looking at this grant this year.
And I also make note that the basic, that's open to all city employees.
Yes.
My, just the guys seen some girls down there.
Oh, yeah. It's included, all city workers and...
It's a nice facility. It's down there at the old police, police building. So what this grant allows to get? New equipment or...
Yeah, it allows to get new equipment, better equipment, so that everybody has a chance to use it. I think it'll help on employees' sickness and stuff like that, mental health issues and stuff like that.
I've been in there and I mean, the equipment is, a lot of it is...
It's outdated.
Some of it may work, some of it may not work.
You know, I know we got people that go at 5:00 in the morning and they're there at night, so...
That's a good deal for people to take advantage of. It's, I think it's great. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number R712-0216, which is an application to the criminal justice department.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Hope that all works out. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider requests and receipts from the Mioshu Rotary Club for reimbursement for the 2015 Labor Day roping from hotel motel tax funds. The staff has reviewed the receipts in the amount of $1,123.25 and you have approved those. Okay? Any questions about that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the $1,123.25.
And I'll second it. A motion and a second to approve those, the reimbursement of those receipts.
Motion and a second to approve those, the reimbursement of those receipts. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to receive the Mioshu Police Department 2015 Annual Contact Data Report. Leanne, I'm going to let you and the chief go over that.
This is something that's required to be presented to council. We contract with Del Carmen to, we provide information to him, he actually puts the report together, and as required, it's presented to council. So, Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
One thing I'd like to add is, this report, I mean, y'all have seen it every year, and kind of take, kind of for granted, but Mr. Del Carmen is the one that Texas DPS hires to do their reports and audit them after the last thing that they've gone through. So we do have a lot of confidence in this man. His reports have come in, they're very accurate, the data we present to them, our contacts, our citations, and he does let us know what areas were kind of shortfall this year, we're not in shortfall. There are some things we had some questions about, that we're going to be working on. And I don't think there's any issues involved. I think it's a very good report, I think the department's still working well, so I'm glad to present it to you.
Chief?
Thank you.
I read through the whole report, there were four things that I basically felt like were excellent on the report, and that is that they were provided all the information, there were not any complaints, and our police department is working very diligently to do what they're supposed to do, and that they found that everything was okay. They could have put that all on one page instead. So, any other questions about the report?
Do we need a motion to receive it?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion to receive the police department contact report.
Second down. And we have a motion and a second to receive that contact data report. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And we want to thank you for all your hard work, your diligence in making this work like it's supposed to. The next thing we would like to do is consider election service contracts with the Mioshu Independent School District.
Because in the past several years, we're asking council to approve a contract where the city would provide election services for the Mioshu Independent School District. Again, and the next item also, Hospital District, we feel like this is a great way for us to serve the voters of our community, where they come to one place to do early voting, they come to one place for Election Day, for all the entities who would be having May elections.
Can we make a motion to pass both those at the same time?
No, they'll need to be in originally. One at a time.
Is our rate of 12 and 10 an hour adequate when the people working there are probably making more than that?
There are some communities that pay less than that, that's completely at the city's discretion. What we ask the school to do and the hospital district to do is to pay the same to election workers, whichever election that people are working, so...
Chief, something you want to add to that? I was going to say, that's pretty typical, I've seen lower, I think you see eight and 10 a bit. I can't remember seeing any higher, actually.
I can tell you, they don't do it for the money. They really put a lot of work in, and they take real pride and take a lot of care in the performing of the election. That's certainly the pleasure of the council.
I was just curious.
I'll make the motion of the contract with MISD handling their elections.
I'll second it.
The motion is a second to contract with MISD in their election. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I'll make a motion that we consider, that we approve a contract with the Mioshu Hospital District.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I think that is a really good thing, because it does simplify people's lives when they conduct their elections.
It's a great way to start.
Much easier than it used to be. Next thing we'd like to do is order a city general election to be held May the 7th of this year. We have seats for city district number one and number two for election. I'll make a motion that we order those elections. I'll second that. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing we'd like to do is to order a city special election to be held May the 7th for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Mioshu at the rate of 1/4 percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. The tax expires on the fourth anniversary of the date of this election unless the imposition of that tax is reauthorized.
Council members, a few years ago, we had an election where we took half of the tax that had been set aside for economic development and put it towards street maintenance. And so that's what this election, we're asking the voters to choose to reauthorize or not that tax for street maintenance.
I'll make a motion to order that election.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to order that special election on May the 7th. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to have the administrative reports.
Mayor, the city held the Wellness Clinic on Wednesday, February 3rd. We have 35 employees and dependents to participate in that. People come from Covenant and provide that Wellness Clinic for us, and it's a benefit for employees through our insurance coverage. And then we want to say thank you to the Mioshu Public Works Department, all first responders, including the Mioshu Police Department and the Mioshu Volunteer Fire Department, and all others, lots of county people, lots of individuals who helped during the Goliath snowstorm. And we appreciate very much all the extra hours and all the extra work, the diligence that was provided for that. Then the city's received notice that SBS intends to file a base rec case with the Public Utility Commission of Texas sometime during February of this year. I think that's something we see continually anyway, that's back again. And then, a visit with the mayor for a little bit, I would like to ask that council consider a work session to look at future prospective projects. It's time for us to start budget work. Seems like we just finished that, and it's coming up again, and so I'd like to ask you all to consider setting a date for a work session.
When is it? Soon as possible.
Ramon and I are set to meet with representatives from Parkill, Smith &amp; Cooper. As y'all know, we've talked about in the past, we have some infrastructure issues that we need to discuss, and we'll be meeting with him on Thursday of this week, so I would hope possibly sometime next week, we could sit down, council and the management team of the city, and discuss some of those things, and also anything that you might have to bring to us to be considered in the next budget year.
Is there a special day you'd like to use, or? Monday nights, good?
Monday's fine with me.
I'm not going to be free next Monday. Any other nights besides Monday? Monday? Do you do that?
Seriously, Spock? I would be part of federal.
What time?
See, Thursday's 6.
Later for you.
Later for me. 6:00, 6:30? Either. It doesn't matter.
We probably need some daylight. Anything?
Possible. You know, if you want to talk at this next meeting, and then time's going to be changing in March, if that would help in as far as, you know, to get out and look at some things, whatever the council's pleasure.
What time does it get dark now?
It's after 6:30.
About 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00, pretty good. 6:00 at 6?
Do you say the 16th? 6 o'clock?
Do you?
Yes.
All the staff will be here, and we'll...
The management team.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Does anybody else have any remarks they'd like to add on?
Have you had any interest in the empty seat next to me?
Not at this time.
Okay.
February the 19th, which is a week from Friday, is the deadline, 5 o'clock, to apply for a place on the ballot for city, school, and hospital district. At this time, Mayor Potom Ellis is the only one who has applied for a place on the ballot in any of the races. We do have an application in hand, but the signature's not been verified for the hospital district election.
What happens if, I don't know this, but if no one applies, do you appoint, can you appoint somebody?
After the charter amendment election was last year, then that was voted on to allow council to appoint someone to fill that position.
Which is one of the great things y'all did as a community, in your charter amendments.
Yes. It's good news.
We still have two weeks, though, we would encourage anyone to come in and make an application in any of those places.
I would also like to say thank you to Police Department, Public Works Department, EMS, everybody that got out and really worked their butt off during the snowfall. I know, especially you, Benny, spent lots of long hours. That took real dedication, we really do appreciate that.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, but sometimes, you know, you folks go above and beyond the call of duty, we appreciate that.
Don't think it doesn't go one another.
It did.
I know it now, because he pulled me out today. Along with Juan, and some of the...
Oh, I'd also like to congratulate city manager Leanne Galman on her recertification in the Texas Registry Municipal Park Association. Glad that you can do that, and we hope that you will continue that. That's a good thing.
And a big thank you, a big ad-voys for earlier staff in their positions, because I...
She received that on January 21st in Frisco, Texas, where you were actually teaching at that same seminar.
We had 562 people register for that seminar, people from all across the state, school districts, hospital districts, and cities for election seminars, so...
That's great, we appreciate that. All right. Anybody else have any comments? If not, then I guess we are adjourned.